Good afternoon. I would like to welcome everyone to the October 12th, 2023 work session of Yerhan Raco County School Board. The first item on our agenda this afternoon is actually the approval of the agenda. Board members may have a motion, please.
I move that the school board approve the agenda for today's meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Atkins. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Ogburn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. The agenda has been approved. The next item on the agenda for this afternoon is items from the superintendent, Dr. Cashwell.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. The first item we have for you is an opportunity to review a proposed draft 2024 legislative agenda, and this is a follow-up to the work you all did as a team at a prior board meeting where you were able to share some priorities. We looked at last year's legislative agenda, and so based on your feedback, we have a draft for your consideration, and again, wouldn't be looking to finalize the legislative agenda until November. And Ken will go ahead and provide an overview, and we welcome your feedback.
Thank you very much, and good afternoon, Chairman Kinsella and board members, Dr. Cashwell. I'm here today to present for your consideration these recommended school board legislative priorities for the 2024 General Assembly session. Following our interactive session that we had on September 28th, we compiled your input and synthesized it into these actionable priorities we feel captures the essence of that discussion and are the most pragmatic areas of advocacy for the next session. In addition to your input from the last work session, additional input was provided from our division leadership team and from reviewing information from the K-12 legislative advocacy community at large. One theme that we heard from the board was the alignment of priorities with the division's strategic plan, Destination 2025, and we feel this list does that. These themes that are listed are also consistent with what we've seen from our fellow legislative liaisons in school divisions around Virginia and from the various associations that represent K-12 education. At your seats, you have a list of the draft school board legislative priorities for your review. I'll quickly walk through each of those priorities areas on the screen as well. First is academic achievement. We want to continue to support revisions to the accreditation system that focuses primarily on academic growth and include a balance of formative performance and standardized assessments, support additional funding and expanded flexibility for English language learner services, fully fund the staffing and curriculum requirements for implementation of the Virginia Literacy Act, and support legislation that allows for expansion of dual enrollment courses in public education high schools, including funds for teachers to earn master's degrees which are required to teach those dual enrollment classes. Among the priorities related to funding are support for those recommendations in the July J-Larke study that promote full funding of the standards of quality, specifically those identified as near-term recommendations that would result in significant additional annual revenue for HCPS. Also, the continued opposition to unfunded mandates, support state funding to recruit and retain critical instructional, operational, and support staff, and remove obstacles to their hiring. Other funding priorities include re-benchmarking funding level adjustments to account for inflation and equitable access to high-speed internet and instructional technology for all students and school communities in Virginia. Obviously, teacher and staff recruitment remains one of the biggest priorities for all school divisions right now and is, again, a focus of our priorities. We support funding to help address critical staffing shortages through increased pay and incentives, but also through the creation of new avenues to support teachers and people who want to join the profession. A big way we could do that is through student loan forgiveness programs, something that was highlighted in the September J-Larke report on Virginia's teacher pipeline, as were other avenues in funding support for teachers to obtain licenses and enter the teaching profession while still maintaining our high professional standards for educators. In addition to funding, we also note the removal of obstacles to hiring by funding certification and licensure fees. As in past years, the desire to eliminate or further modify the support cap to increase funding for critical positions such as assistant principals and instructional assistance is captured in these priorities. One particular item for which we could potentially try to find a bill sponsor is the removal of the special education exclusion for teachers seeking endorsements through the provisional licensure route for people interested in the career switcher program. There's currently an exception in the law for that. Without question, the safety and wellness of HCPS students and staff are the school board's top priority every single day, and we are committed to school security and students' health and wellness, and that is reflected here with support for funding and resources to maintain the physical security of schools and campuses. The recommended priorities also address the need for legislation and funding to increase the number of school-based mental health professionals in our schools and wraparound community services for students in the greatest needs. These priorities also reflect the board's expressed support for legislation that promotes enhanced safe storage of weapons and parental accountability, and also, we will advocate for the expansion of school and community-based mental health programs and resources available both during and outside of school hours. The final area of the 2024 legislative agenda addresses the autonomy and responsibilities of a school board, and this can be synthesized into the statement that HCPS firmly opposes any legislation or action that would limit or remove local school board authority over any established schools in our division. So that concludes our draft priorities for your consideration. After receiving any additional feedback from you today, we will bring the final version back for your approval at the October 26th meeting, and we now invite your feedback, questions, and comments.
Thank you so much, Mr. Blackstone. We appreciate you capturing, you and the team capturing, our 2024 priorities this afternoon. I'm going to start to my left. Ms. Atkins.
Thank you for the review. I think you did a very good job taking the feedback and encompassing it into what we have here today. I wouldn't like to see verbiage around nutrition, and I took a stab at maybe how it could be done, and so please, of course, do your research and think about how it could be incorporated. Support legislative measures and budgetary allocations aimed at providing comprehensive support for students contending with housing insecurities, nutritional deficiencies, foster care involvement, and individuals with specialized requirements and those necessitating mental health services. The reason why I played with the words a bit is because, you know, thinking about special education, it is complicated. However, I think instead of zoning in on using the word "special education," maybe make it a bit broader and really focus in on individuals that have specialized requirements. And I think we could have a broader way of advocating in that space. And the other word, of course, including in there is nutritional deficiencies, understanding that there are food deserts across specific spaces, and I believe that when we're thinking about safety and wellness, they really are tied together, and including nutritional in their deficiencies would allow us in the General Assembly or those in the General Assembly to be a champion in that space as well. But that's my only feedback, is under safety and wellness, so thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Atkins. Mrs. Ogburn?
Sure. If we could go to the academic achievement slide, if you don't mind. There we go. When I'm looking at this, one of the first things that sort of hit me was that one problem we encounter every year is that things change from year to year so much, and, you know, whether it's the criteria, it's the expectations, it's accountability, it's the testing, it's the processes, things like that. Quite frankly, it depends on who's in office as to how these things all work out, which I think it puts our teachers, staff, and students, everybody, at such a disadvantage. So, you know, trying to not get political here, because, like I said, it depends on who's elected. But if we're going to really compare academic achievement from one year to the next, I think we need consistency, and consistency for, you know, student performance and school performance. And so what I'm wondering is if we could put something, add some words in here that would add clear expectations with consistent guidance from DOE and the legislature, not necessarily using those two words. But, you know, it seems like to me we're always reaching for the minimum, and we want to raise the bar higher than that. But all of the frequent changes, it just seems like to me we're not doing our kids the service that they deserve or our staff and parents when there is that lack of consistency from year to year. So if we could, I mean, to me, it's, if we could support revisions to the accreditation system that focus on consistency, on clear expectations and accountability and that kind of thing. I'm just wondering, I'm curious what anybody else thinks about this, but to me, that's one of our biggest challenges each year, is that, you know, you've got parents who are looking at, you know, all these scores, but really and truly, that is not a fair comparison from one year to the next because so many things have changed. And so I'm thinking that if we could just add a little bit of verbiage here that would help, I think, us as the school leaders to be able to look at how our schools are doing, but also our staff.
For clarity, Ms. Ogburn, is it more of a, I guess, when you're talking about the inconsistency, right, with things evolving and changing year to year, more of an apples-to-apples approach? Would that be possible?
It is possible. I think, you know, what I'm hearing is the board's advocacy for any accreditation system to provide some consistency over time, you know, so that those data sets provide some comparability. We can really measure things like student growth and change, but to your point, Mrs. Ogburn, there have been so many changes within the accreditation system, even the one that we're currently under, that it can become complicated to do that. And actually, we wrestled a bit with the language here because we do know that the VDOE is in the process of making changes. So that ship has sailed as far as, but I do think what we can say is that any of those revisions not only do these things we advocate for, but also create consistency or, you know, that there's a period of time in which those would remain steady. I think we can certainly add that language here.
Well, and I do like that we focus primarily on academic growth. That's new, you know, language for us compared to years past, but include a balance of formative performance and standardized assessments, but we could add words there of consistent. And, I mean, that just, that word "consistency," I think, would really help us a lot.
I think we understand the sentiment and can work on some adjustments there. Thank you.
Okay, and if we could go to the staff recruitment one, I just have one question there. I think it's the next, yeah, this one. With the first one, fund certification and licensure fees, I'm just wondering, could we use the word "waive" instead of "fund"? Because I think that's what we actually want to have happen, is that our teachers don't have to pay for their certification and that licensure fee. It would be basically part of the process. I don't know if that's even possible.
And we've moved to covering that as a district. The challenge is we don't receive state funds to reimburse that expense that we are taking on, nor do other school systems, and nor are they fortunate enough oftentimes to be able to waive those fees. There may be a way to make this language more specific to what we're looking for, to your point.
Well, and what I'm wondering, though, is if this was part of the process, the state would, not, the counties wouldn't have to cover it. This would just be part of the process that is covered.
If the state removed the renewal and licensure fees altogether.
Right.
Yeah, that's certainly something we can look at.
And then I had one other thing, it's not in here anywhere, but I have a question. I've had actually a couple of teachers recently bring something up about, they're very grateful for the earlier start in school and, you know, having that, we're going to have school ending in May is great. And, but what I'm hearing is that teachers are a little concerned about the start, the cutoff date for kindergarten. They're now getting four-year-olds who come in with six weeks before the cutoff date is now September 30th. They have to be five by September 30th. And I had a teacher tell me yesterday she had a child whose birthday was early September for, and is in kindergarten for five weeks before they are actually turning five. And so I'm just wondering if this is any feedback anybody else has gotten, that the change of date, the state mandates what our cutoff date is, and I'm hearing, and I'm just wondering if this is something we can advocate to move that date back a little bit?
We can do some digging into this and get back to you. I will say, prior to the current scenario, when we were starting so much later than almost others in the state and even nation, this was a persistent issue when students would come to our district from other areas. We had more, more roadblocks were on my radar then than are now, but certainly something we can peel back and look into and provide some potential language for.
And I think that, like I said, I'm hearing it from teachers, that they've got these really young ones that are starting, and they're six weeks before.
And it probably is more in alignment, what has been practiced, you know, in other localities in the state who didn't have the Labor Day restrictions that had been in this area.
And I'm not sure that that goes here or not, but that's why I bring it up, because it could be something that at some point we decide to advocate for, is rolling that date back, but anyway.
Yeah, we can take a look at that.
There we go. Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Ogburn. Mrs. Shea.
Thank you so mu, oh, thank you so much. So when I take first blush at all of these priorities, which I think y'all did a really great job capturing our feedback and kind of parsing it down, but when I look at these 75, roughly 75% of them have to do with funding and 25% don't. And so these funding goals are super important. I mean, we know that in order to be able to do what we need to do, we need the state to pony up better, right? But also, in a practical sense, we also know that the pie is only so big as to what the state's going to allocate, and it's kind of, all of these are looking at kind of dicing it up differently. So I certainly support our advocacy for more funding and better funding, but I also want us perhaps to lean in more with the 25% that aren't about funding in terms of maybe where we can make some real inroads with advocacy, you know, knowing that a lot of people come to our legislators looking for funding for a lot of things. Again, I'm not saying stop advocating for funding, that's important, but I think perhaps since we're local and we have more access to the capital in terms of doing in-person advocacy, you know, perhaps we could, you know, when the board goes to advocate or elsewhere, really try to concentrate on this 25% that doesn't require funding. You know, perhaps we can really move the needle there as well. You know, so that was just, you know, because we know as a board, there's a lot of things we love to fund within our school division, right? But it all comes back to the pie that's only but so big, and so often, we can move the needle more quickly on things that aren't funding-based in terms of policy and that sort of thing. So just trying to apply that thinking with our legislators. So two of those that I want to look at, one is under academic achievement, and it is the fourth bullet point under academic achievement under dual enrollment. So I think as a board, we've talked about how dual enrollment is so important to move things forward for our students. At the state level, there's agreement. Nationally, with the DOE, there's agreement. But one of these, the biggest barriers continues to be this master's degree for teachers. Just for clarity, it's not just a master's degree, it has to be a master's degree in the content area that they're teaching. So for example, I have a physics degree, I have a master's in science curriculum and instruction, I cannot teach a dual enrollment class because I don't have a master's in physics. Can I teach AP? Yes. Can I teach IB? Yes. Can I teach dual enrollment? No. And so while I would love for our teachers to be able to get master's degree in their content area, not only is that a cost lift, which this advocates for grants there, that's a significant time investment, and so that's going to continue to be a significant hurdle. So perhaps we could advocate for an alternative to content area masters. And Dr. Cashwell and I have talked about this, I talked with some of our legislative representatives just kind of unofficially, and I don't know where the governing body for this is.
It's at the community college level. It's beyond our, it's not something, but there is room for advocacy there, I think, with our partners, our community college partners, I think some joint advocacy to help elevate that cause. But, you know, their standards for being accredited as community colleges require this. And so that's where, to your point, we're pushing for a potential change, and I think there's room for us to advocate, whether it's a legislative advocacy item or another avenue. We certainly can take note of that and work on those efforts, and we can report back to you.
Yeah, and it may be possible that some sort of legislative change could trigger a change with their governing body. So, yeah, it's not, when I look at the master's in content area, it's not really even the cost that I think is the biggest barrier for our teachers, it's the time, right? It's the time to, and so looking at alternative, an alternative to that.
Yeah, I know there had been talk about the potential of some different arrangements with dual enrollment where the community college provided teacher of record with that master's, and then our teacher could, you know, still provide the instruction under a certain umbrella of qualification. So there's certainly room for discussion there. I hear you to the additional clarification around, if not the master's, then what does the requirement look like for the K-12 side versus the higher ed side?
I appreciate, and it sounds weedy, but, you know, everybody, you know, the, everybody on every level is talking about dual enrollment, dual enrollment, how do we do it? Well, like, we got to get weedy to figure out where to take these barriers away. And then just the second one I wanted to point out is on safe schools and student wellness, on the fourth bullet point. I just want to express my appreciation for including parental accountability there. I've had advocacy from my district about how important this is for the safety of our schools and our students in our community, not only to bring forth the message of safe storage, but advocating for parental accountability with it. So thank you. That's all.
Thank you, Mrs. Shea. Reverend Cooper.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So again, Ms. Blackstone, I echo the sentiments of my peers in regards to the encapsulation of the ideas and the suggestions that we provided. Can we quickly just look at, and I just want your comment on instructional staff recruitment?
This one, there's two of them.
No, actually, I'm sorry. Let's do, it's actually for funding. I want to just talk quickly, what are your thoughts on us, the instructional staff recruitment, the one paid to national average, and funding to address critical teacher shortages? Do you think that we can get closer to it this legislative session? It's slide number five, that first bullet, to support state funding to address critical teacher shortages, including increased teacher paid to national average?
Let's see. That one. I'm sorry, so the question is, do we think we could, we can?
Well, how do you think, how close do you think, first of all, do you think we can get there? If not, how close do you think we can? Because we do know that Virginia is so low, and I know Ms. Shea just eloquently espoused about the pie, you know, but this is something that's critical in regards to everything that we're about from a human resource perspective, recruiting, retaining, and rewarding.
I think there is some traction for that, particularly after the July J-Larke study, which had a number of recommendations for increasing funding and also for things like the loan reimbursement and bringing it up to levels of our state neighbors like North Carolina and Maryland. So I do believe that this is probably an opportunity that we have this year with that study in particular being the impetus of that.
Yeah, just underscore the J-Larke report, and I see John Whack coming forward. He would welcome the opportunity to opine on this a bit, but certainly, you know, what's realistic to come out of the session, hard to tell because of a lot of factors, certainly something I think we want to continue to place on our, you know, I know this has been a longstanding item, right, related to funding and legislative agenda. I do think the J-Larke report underscores some of the urgency, hopefully that will create conditions for a little more traction than we've seen in the past, but as always, state dollars are limited, and so how those flow back is to be determined. And we're fortunate, in our locality, you know, our local government most often makes up the share for us to stay competitive, and not everyone in Virginia is fortunate enough. John, what would you want to add there?
Yeah, I would just highlight, there's kind of two major layers to that. One would be which positions are funded under the standards of quality. So that is one of the major recommendations from the J-Larke study, is to staff school divisions as they currently do. I think that one recommendation would be over $70 million per year for Yerhan Raco County Public Schools, if that was something the state would fund. But then, getting back to the individual salaries, we have, of course, positions that are above and beyond the standards of quality, so we are dependent on our local government and the board of supervisors to provide local funding to help make up that gap. So anytime we give an across-the-board salary increase, the standards of quality, even if a position is covered there, the locality is going to have to come up with nearly half of the cost of that salary increase. But, and any little bit helps, but the two big pieces were, would be, one, to fund more instructional positions under the standards of quality, and then also to provide more support.
I appreciate the detail-oriented nature of your answer because I think it's important that our staff know that those are those factors that drive what we can and cannot do in regards to SOQs and the positions that get funded. I think that plays a huge part in it.
It is a really good question because I think it highlights how this priority ties very much into that SOQ priority, which is listed separately, but, you know, all of these funding advocacy pieces sort of go hand in hand. You can daisy-chain them together in some way, shape, or form. We've parsed them out to be real specific and clear, but many of them are interrelated.
So even using the current year as an example, so the Commonwealth is providing for SOQ-funded positions, 5% for the course of the year, and I think an additional 2% effective January, our employees are enjoying 8.2% for the entire year. So there is a fair amount of local funding that's supporting that. But again, any more additional funding, we can stretch those local dollars to get closer to the national average.
Thank you, Ms. Whack. Madam Chair, thank you.
Thank you so much, Reverend Cooper. Thank you, colleagues, for highlighting all the things that you did to make sure our legislative agenda is complete. As everyone's spoken to funding, and then Mrs. Shea focused on the non-funding pieces, I would just like to piggyback on that because I know my colleagues and I often talk about, matter of fact, all the time, we talk about whether locally, whether at the state level or locally, all the uninitiatives. What can we uninitiative? What can we lift off the plates? Because I know when we discussed, you know, why employees leave, and we discussed the workplace results that were released from the state of Virginia, one of the major reasons people were leaving was burnout. So when I think about burnout and how do we fix burnout, which is occurring across the state, according to the study I read, I would like to have something in our legislative agenda that speaks to that. Whereas at the state level, whatever, since they're analyzing things and their systems currently, what can they uninitiate? What can they uninitiative and unburden our employees with, not just our teachers? And then I would like for us to continue to have those discussions locally as well. I think that would, you know, our employees say they want to feel seen, heard, and valued, and I think that would be a great step. and I think that would be a great step in that direction. And then that's all, that's all I had for this afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, we appreciate the feedback, the thoughts for consideration, and we'll look forward to sharing some updates to the document with you for your review prior to our next board meeting. So the next item is part of our Destination 2025 Strategic Plan reporting, and this is a report out on our state accreditation ratings based on the standards of learning assessment performance and other indicators from the previous school year. You know, these have preliminarily been released since the summer with just those final results being reported on and everything being finalized just in recent weeks. So we are pleased to be able to provide you that comprehensive overview now, and even have some guests from our schools here to participate in that, and look forward to hearing from them as well. Have Dr. Hinton start us off.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Cashwell. On October the 3rd, the Virginia Department of Education finalized school-state accreditation ratings, which is a key performance metric of Destination 2025 Division Strategic Plan. Our presentation this afternoon will provide an overview of the accreditation process and school performance, and the team will share how schools are being supported in their improvement efforts. One of the strategic goals of Destination 2025 is to achieve academic excellence. Towards this effort, the plan includes implementation drivers or action steps that direct the school division to support schools with developing and implementing school-quality plans to address accreditation and other goals. One of the metrics used to monitor our progress towards academic excellence are school-state accreditation indicators. Annually, schools receive state accreditation ratings based on their performance and progress on academic achievement indicators in English, Math, and Science. For English and Math indicators, performance is based on the number of students who pass SOL or other approved state assessments, or who demonstrate growth across multiple tests. Chronic absenteeism, which is defined as the percentage of students missing 10% or more of the school year, is also included as an indicator in accreditation for all schools. Additionally, high schools have several other indicators that factor into their accreditation ratings, including the Graduation and Completion Index, dropout rate, and a new indicator this year of College, Career, and Civic Readiness. The CCCRI indicator measures for the graduating cohort, student preparation for college and careers while in high school. Credit is given for advanced coursework such as AP, IB, and dual enrollment course completion, CTE courses and credentials, JROTC coursework and credentials, work-based learning, and service learning experiences. For each indicator, schools receive a level designation of 1, 2, or 3 based on their performance or progress towards meeting established benchmarks, using either current-year data or a three-year calculation. A school's overall accreditation rating is based on the performance levels of the indicators. This slide shows a summary of each accreditation indicator and the percentage and number of schools at each level. You'll note that a large majority of our schools are achieving at Level 1 for English and Math when we consider all students together. However, as data are disaggregated by achievement gap group, more schools are at Level 2 or 3. Additionally, the majority of our schools are at Level 1 for Graduation and Completion Index, and we've seen an increase since last year of schools with a Level 1 rating. Consequently, we are also seeing more schools with a Level 1 rating for the dropout rate indicator when compared to the prior year. For the new CCCRI indicator, the majority of schools are at Level 2 or 3. For the English and Math Achievement Gap indicators, groups are also given levels based on performance and progress. The combination of student group ratings determines a school overall rating on the indicator. When we examine school levels by group for English, you'll see that a majority of schools are achieving at Level 1 for all groups, except students with disabilities. In comparison to the other groups, more schools are at Level 2 or 3 in the Black and Economically Disadvantaged Groups. However, when compared to the prior year, we've seen an increase in schools at Level 1 across all groups. In reviewing the group data for Math, we see more schools at Level 1 across most groups when compared to English, but the same general trends. As I mentioned earlier, a school's overall accreditation rating is based on the performance levels of the indicators. Schools are accredited if each indicator is Level 1 or 2. Schools are accredited with conditions if one or more indicators are at Level 3. The Virginia Board of Education determines if any school is denied accreditation. All Henrico schools are accredited this year, with 84% of schools fully accredited and 16% accredited with conditions. We are pleased to share that we have two schools who became fully accredited this year. We have representatives from the teams at Montrose Elementary and Elko Middle School here with us this afternoon. If they will stand, please help us congratulate them and their communities for their hard I'd also like to note that Board Docs includes an attachment with the accreditation information for each of our schools for your reference, and the information is also available on the Virginia School Quality Profiles located on the Virginia Department of Education website. At this time, Ms. Sealy, Director of School Quality, will provide an update on the process being used in both the division and schools to support improvement efforts.
Good afternoon. The vision of the Henrico County Public Schools Department of School Quality in alignment with Destination 2025 is to provide ongoing support for schools regardless of their accreditation level. At the request of principals, we have restructured the department to emphasize central school-quality support, pushing into the building for hands-on support with principals and school teams. This is different from previous years when we were conducting pull-out professional learning with the requirement on the principals to implement on their own. Our focus this year is on the use of improvement science to impact school-quality indicators. Together, chiefs, directors, specialists, principals, and associate principals are committed to the "I'm an improver" mindset by learning about improvement science and applying it to the school-quality process. All schools, regardless of the level of their academic indicators, are carefully reviewing the needs of their students in order to develop the most responsive school-quality plan possible. Schools are also reviewing and revising their response to chronic absenteeism with a focus on building positive attendance habits and deeply understanding the barriers that keep students from regularly attending school. There are three key ways the School Quality Department is supporting schools in the development and implementation of their school-quality plans. Through alignment of division resources, problem-solving at the division level, and simplifying reporting, we believe we have refined the process to provide a high level of support for all schools as they navigate this year's accreditation process. Collaboration with the Division of Learning allows school quality to ensure the plans are aligned with the division's expectations and best practices. By including key division staff in all parts of the process, we provide schools with the support they need to implement their plans. Division Network Improvement Committees, also known as NICS, are designed to identify division concerns in the accreditation indicators. They are led by school-quality staff and include representation from all departments in the Division of Learning, as well as Equity, Diversity, and Opportunity, and Family and Community Engagement. Division NICS follow the same school-quality process as schools. They completed a comprehensive needs assessment and wrote a plan to respond to the root cause of the concerns. The teams will now work with two to three volunteer schools to test the solution before deciding if we scale it to all schools. Finally, we are simplifying the reporting process for schools around division-required assessments, as well as regular updates of their progress on their school-quality plans. School scorecards will give us a quarterly update of school progress without requiring schools to report additional data. No matter the level of accreditation, all of our schools are working hard to implement changes that will support the needs of their students. All Henrico County principals are committed to the continuous improvement process. With us today to share specific examples of this process are Dr. Jessica Burbick, Principal at Short Pump Middle School, and Dr. Shondell Edwards-Hamlin, Principal at Fair Oaks Elementary. At this time, I will turn the presentation over to Dr. Burbick.
The school-quality indicator we are working to improve is student achievement in the areas of English and Math Achievement Gap Groups with a focus on our subgroup of students with disabilities. When we completed the comprehensive needs assessment around this indicator, we identified several possible root causes of the problem. With a focus on exploring one root cause at a time, we chose the need for additional individualized professional learning for our teachers and teaching pairs of students with disabilities. The strategy to address our root cause will be to collaborate with our Central Office Exceptional Education and Professional Learning Teams, Team Members, to develop and implement timely and continuous professional learning opportunities. This professional learning will be designed for general education and exceptional education teachers of our students with disabilities. Training will be provided within department teams and for general and exceptional education collaborative pairs in English and Math. Our measure of success will be evidenced by the increase in student achievement on English and Math county assessments of the aligned curriculum and end-of-year SOLs for our subgroup of students with disabilities. Our action plan includes four steps. First, we will determine a baseline of teacher efficacy and knowledge of best practice for teaching and providing specially-designed instruction for students with disabilities in the English and Math classrooms. We will determine this baseline knowledge using self-assessments, rating scales, and feedback forms. We will then use the baseline data to develop targeted professional learning opportunities for our teachers. We will conduct regular observations of classrooms to gather data on the strategies and research-based best practices being implemented. We will provide evidence-based and specific feedback to our teachers, along with the necessary support to implement recommended changes and adjustments. We will measure the success of these action steps using achievement data for our students with disabilities, along with observation data to guide continued professional learning experiences. The work on this school has already begun, as you can see from the photos of our teachers participating in professional learning and implementing the learning with their students. I will now turn the presentation over to my colleague, the Principal of Fair Oaks Elementary,
Fair Oaks is Level 3 for the Science School Indicator. For the purposes of VDA accreditation standards, the focus is on the 5th grade SOL performance. When we completed the comprehensive needs assessment around the Science Indicator, we identified several possible root causes of the problem. With a focus on exploring one root cause at a time, we elected to address the content knowledge of novice teachers. This impacted effective delivery to include hands-on investigation experiences. The strategy to address the root calls will work to support the needs of both teachers and students. Fair Oaks will increase the scientific investigation opportunities for all students by providing teachers with support from the District Science Coach to design and deliver the aligned curriculum. These efforts will be monitored by the administration team through classroom observations, walkthroughs, attendance and planning meetings, and science unit assessment data discussions. Carnegie Foundation, which is also referenced in the book, "Learning to Improve," provides research about the importance of active learning. This research shows students learn best when they are provided an opportunity to conduct scientific inquiry. To support our teachers in implementing scientific investigation opportunities, we will focus on professional learning to gain knowledge on scientific inquiry-based practices. As outlined in the HCPS instructional model, students' growth and success will be measured throughout the year with school-based and state-based assessments, which will be formative and summative in nature. Students' performance, data, and the needs of the educator will be the focus of planning meetings, as well as data discussions. The formative assessments will be driven by performance data, student, and teacher. And summative assessment will be in the form of the Spring 2024 Standards of Learning In order to address the root calls, we will implement the following action steps. Conduct professional learning for teachers based on the educator's needs and SOL requirements. Model lessons for teachers. Provide opportunities for peer observations. And provide timely feedback after classroom visits to include follow-up discussions. We will lead data discussions and teacher self-reflection after unit assessments. Teachers begin at Fair Oaks on the Fair Oaks School Quality Plan just before school began, as you can see from the photo slides in the slide deck. I will now turn the presentation over to Dr. Thomas Farrell, Director of High Schools.
Our schools have started strong, anchored our work on hope, belonging, and learning. As a Central Office team, we're supporting the needs of our schools by building the capacity of our instructional staff and school leaders through professional learning. We also provide resources and support for extended learning opportunities and targeted interventions for individual students. To monitor and support the work of our schools, directors meet with principals and administrative teams monthly. In addition, directors and other members of the Central Office team work alongside schools to review student data collected through various platforms. This collaboration allows for the Central Office team to be deliberate with allocating resources and support, ensuring that all schools have what they need to support staff and students. While the Division of School Leadership Directors are the first level of support for schools, our entire Central Office team is committed to the excellence of all schools and programs in HCPS. This concludes our update, and we welcome questions at this time.
Thank you so much to Dr. Hinton, Ms. Sealy, Dr. Burbick, Dr. Edwards-Hamlin, and Dr. Farrell. And once again, really, congratulations. I'm sure board members are going to have more to say to our Elko Middle School team, as well as our Montrose Elementary Schools teams. Thank you so much for being here with us today, and congratulations, really. We're so proud of you and all the work that you've done, and please let us know if there's any way we specifically can continue to support you. I'm going to start to my left with Mrs. Shea.
Thank you so much, team. There's certainly a lot to process here, and even with this, I know this just kind of skims the surface of all of, all of the data that goes behind this. So I will just start right in, kind of speaking to what we talked about in our legislative agenda. The goalposts with this seem to keep moving in terms of not only what's required of us and our students, but also when we look at the actual SOL assessments, less, students are having to take less SOLs, which is the right move for students. But I know that also impacts, when we just kind of look at the raw scores, what that looks like, particularly at the high school level. If a student passes, for example, let's say they pass the Biology SOL in 9th grade, that means they don't have to take any more Science SOLs in high school. However, if they do not pass the Biology, then they would take hypothetically the Chemistry. So we're looking at often like the subset of students taking the Chemistry SOL are mostly students who have not been successful in previous SOLs. So we would expect that to impact the pass rate then of those subsequent SOLs. Has the state taken that into account at all?
I'll just note, yes, they have. I mean, I think there's acknowledgement that the current system, which again, every year has some nuances that are a tad different, and all well-intended, I'd say the addition of the CCCRI for high schools makes sense as an indicator, right? But even that itself came with some complications, which then delayed the accreditation results because we were able to resubmit some things there. You know, I think what we've seen, at least in, in recent months, is that the Virginia Board of Education is, is looking at a new way forward that may not include many of the components as we know them today. So I certainly don't want to say it's a futile discussion, but I think to the point made earlier, there have been small tweaks along the way. I think as they're considering a general overhaul, the kinds of things you're mentioning have been part of the discussion. You know, what is it that works well with our current system, where there's some challenges? I think we all know that, you know, there are some challenges, and we've been advocating around those for some time. So I think they've, they've sought to address them, and how could growth perhaps be factored in indifferently? in and differently, so on and so forth. So it may be too early to tell. Do you have anything to add to that, Dr. Hinton?
No, I think you summarized it very well in terms of, you know, some of the changes that may be coming in the next couple of years. But at this point, the accreditation model is pretty consistent in terms of what's being included from year to year.
Thank you. Well, and I think also, as the public works to digest, you know, this data and this information beyond just the 1, 2, 3, but as they look at these numbers, I think there's an information gap there as well. It's not like SOLs 10 years ago where every student took every SOL, and so also with, which is beyond our control, but you know, the external rating systems that like rate our schools, which is what a lot of parents look at when they're buying houses and this sort of that, like none of that has caught up to the constant changes with accreditation. And so I just, I think that's a significant hurdle, not for our schools and our school personnel to deal with, but as we look at how the public's digesting this information and we try to help them along in understanding. I notice when I look at these, when I look at all of our scores kind of in aggregate, that HVA has some challenges in their accreditation. I know that's a new program that we're looking at, or that we have started. What are our, what do we think the root cause is there, and how can we, how can we support that?
With?
Well, HVA, when we look at kind of their accreditation ratings, is an opportunity for growth there for us. So what do we see as some of the root causes for their, you know, for some of their challenges? And how, as a board, can we support and advocate for them?
I'll take a stab at that one, to say that I don't know that it would be fair for me to give an assessment on the spot, but that's certainly something we can get you a little more detail on. I do know some from preliminary conversations, yes, a new program. So, you know, we're unpacking anything from the implications of instruction, the instructional model, to understanding, you know, it is a smaller student body than a comprehensive school. And to the point you were making earlier, when you look at a smaller subset of students, the way the data may reflect may not be the best reflection, given unique student needs and scenarios and all of those things, the reasons students may be opting for this environment if they haven't been successful in the traditional environment. And so I don't want to overgeneralize, because every student is unique and brings talents and treasures, but that's certainly the school improvement process that we heard from two schools on, and the way they dig into the root cause and unpack the data is exactly what they're doing to get to the bottom of that. So we'd be happy to share kind of what they're unpacking, so that I can give you some more specifics there.
Fantastic, and I appreciate that context that you added as well. Dr. Cashwell, I know some of these Level 3 areas have been, we've really embraced those as opportunities for growth and change, particularly, for example, with Tucker's dropout rate. I know that's been a, Ms. Agburn's talked about it, that's been a challenge, and specifically with the EL population there and the transancy there. So is it too, or I know last year we implemented, or you all implemented some new support programs around that. Is it too early to see impact from that? Are we seeing good trends?
Yes, I think it's still a little too early to see, you know, full impact of the implementation of that program, but we are starting to see some more positive trends in terms of the level of engagement from the students and families. So we're excited about the work that's being done. We think it's going to have an impact, but at this point, I just think it's too early to be able to determine the full impact of what we started last year.
Thank you. And then to Emery's team, just kudos for really taking feedback from the principals and the schools as to what's the most value-added in terms of coaching and time for simplifying reporting process. I'm kind of going to the uninitiative that Ms. Goncello was talking about earlier. How do we get the same benefit out with less red tape and that sort of thing? So thank you for your team for really taking that to heart and digging into that. And then just, this may be a longer question than this has time for, so feel free to report to me later. But, you know, as we look at this in conjunction with tutoring efforts, where do we fall on those tutoring efforts? What can you share, or if it's better to report back at another time, that's fine as well?
I will be reporting back, and I am glad you asked, so you would have gotten the report whether you, because there's plenty more to come on this topic. But I mean, certainly, we have always used SOL data and other assessment data to really hone in on students who need a remediation and tutoring in our schools. We've always offered that, and I think our schools do an incredible job remediating. What I think you're probably referring to is just recently, the VDOE put forward some initial state funds, still to be determined. We're working through that, along with an All-In Virginia Plan that has funding, kind of a 70, 20, 10% dictated spending plan, with the largest portion of that going to student tutoring efforts, if you will. And the way they're defining tutoring looks different than simply the remediation. We've taken into account in the past, are looking at acceleration models and so on. They are looking at additional categories that we've not typically included. So these include requirements for us to provide tutoring to students who have passed but are at risk of failing. If you'll recall that category, which we saw newly shared with some data. So we're working to support our schools with understanding who would be required to be remediated. There are some very specific requirements about how that looks, the number of times they have to have per week, the dosage. There are some significant implications to the human resources needed to provide this. We've elevated that across the state, every superintendent has. They've, VDOE has given some flexibility there. All this to say, we know what's required, we know where we have some flexibility. Our teams are working to develop some protocols for our schools that give them the most freedom and flexibility to do well, what we know they can do well, but also some supports. There are still some lingering questions related to how that will be implemented and exactly what the funding looks like. The state CAC tool for school divisions is yet to be released, not yet, so even as of sitting here today. So plans have to go to VDOE, they have to be approved before funds can be received, and so on. So we'll keep the board up to date on those efforts, and you know, really, to the point of, you know, the pressure on our schools and the many things. You talk about uninitatives and initiatives, you know, here's something, you know, coming from the top that certainly aligns with our belief that all students deserve to have, you know, quality instruction remediation when they needed to get on target, but put some layers in place that involves maybe a little more red tape than we're used to here. So we're going to try to keep that as smooth as possible and reduce any additional anxieties on our teams and how they implement that. We'll keep you posted.
Thank you. I think, yeah, my first thought with the, when I, some of these tutoring is, where are we going to find the people? Like, where are we going to find the high-quality people that can really move the needle for our students that we don't already have in a classroom, like that we don't already have elsewhere? And so, so that will be interesting. I want to give a shout out to one of my, all my schools doing incredible things, serving the needs of students and finding these gaps and filling them. The Freeman Math Department specifically last year just did an extraordinary job in how they identified even like substrands of things that students were perhaps struggling with before it became an issue, and the way they like team taught during their Freeman Focus time. I mean, it was just an all-hands-on-deck, incredible effort. They saw huge improvement in their, in their outcomes as well. So, and then just tied to that, as we think about this tutoring and where we're finding the people, I know some of our cars have shared just the challenge, even in our model we have now before the expansion, of finding these high-quality individuals to come do the remediation on a regular schedule. And so this is a HR legal kind of consideration to make sure we don't have entanglement, but some of our teachers who are willing to do that remediation outside of their class, right, outside of their normal kind of scope of instruction, but that are willing to do that remediation during their planning time or whatever else, being able to compensate them accordingly like we would from someone we hire from the outside, that may provide us some more human resource flex there.
That's exactly one of the, you mentioned one of the many considerations we're untangling and working with schools on, again, to give them the most flexibility to leverage the qualified staff we have on hand and do so in a manner when we're most likely to have high student attendance. You know, we know from, as you've pointed, the after-school models and so on, they provide a number of challenges. So we're going to keep all options open and support our schools in every way we can to, you know, meeting the requirements of the All-In plans, but also allowing the most flexibility possible and considering points like you just made. So more guidance for our schools to come, and we'll keep you all posted.
Awesome. And then just lastly, Elko, Montrose, extraordinary, just extraordinary job. Again, all of our schools are doing, are doing really great work, but the gains made, the investment in your students and looking outside of the box and figuring out the need and filling the need, we are so proud. And we are so excited to see, just, like we said, this is just one tool we look at to look at what's going on in schools, but to see those significant gains, thank you. Thank you for your incredible work. We are, even before the meeting, we were talking, did you see Montrose? Did you see Elko? We were just thrilled to see that, so thank you.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Shea. Thank you for highlighting the HR requirements for all of the tutoring with All-In Virginia, because I know when I prepped for today's meeting, a quote jumped out at me that I read, and it reads as follows: Anyone can apply to be a tutor. An application will be on the Virginia Department of Education website. So please, thank you. So just thank you for highlighting qualified, and thank you, team, for already realizing this within, that we should really try to make use of our qualified employees that we already have and finding the funding to support them. So thank you for letting me just highlight what you just said in the moment. Mrs. Agburn, comments or questions?
Sure, thank you. First of all, I love that we are looking at the root causes, drilling down, finding out what is it that we really need to work on and get sort of a laser focus on something. It seems like such a much more impactful strategy than might have come before. But, but to follow up on what Mrs. Shea was saying, the chronic absenteeism and the dropout rate is, is one of the things that I follow a lot with, especially at Tucker, because this is something we talked to Mr. Hamon about a lot. So just curious, is there a baseline strategy that we have for across the county for addressing this, that's then sort of adapted to each school's needs? Or is this one of those things that we address individually at each school? I'm just curious, if there's something that we all share, a strategy, or?
So as far as chronic absenteeism goes, the strategy that we are looking at first with our schools with that indicator is, do you have a very detailed tracking system when it comes to why students are absent? So as we know, for chronic absenteeism, it can be excused or unexcused. It doesn't necessarily have to be a truancy issue, which we track very well. So first, just implementing a tracking system that is monitored weekly through the attendance teams, and we are, so you heard me mention the NIC. We have a chronic absenteeism NIC that is working with a handful of schools to actually prepare an HCPS process that we would deploy to schools and say, here's what we want you to do. But we are starting with the Attendance Works best practices of, do you have a running document? Not just of the current kids who are trending chronically absent, because right now that's two absences, given the number of weeks we've been in school. But do you, are you also looking at the students from last year who were chronically absent? Do you understand why? How are we making outreach to the families? And then once we have that, we can start looking at what drives the chronic absenteeism at that particular school and start putting resources toward that and understanding that the kind of trends that show in the data. But to get to that point, we have to watch that weekly and have the attendance teams talking about that. And so every school has an attendance team, which has their attendance secretary and their registrar, and an administrator, and teachers on there that are really digging into the data to understand the barriers and challenges and how we can address those.
Right. That's, that's great information, I appreciate it. Are we still, I know this is something we've talked about in the past, penalized by, as far as is this, the chronic absenteeism and the dropout rate, by students who leave the system but don't tell us where they went?
Yes.
Is this still as big a problem? Is it, I mean, because it happens a lot, I think, more than most people even realize. Do we even, I mean, how do we track that? I know that's just constant work, but it's a big problem. Do you have, I mean, just curious, like?
It's hard. Our schools have turned into detective agencies. They utilize every phone number they can find, social media, you name it, talking to friends, family members that might have known the student, and in some cases, it's just impossible to track students down. So, but we don't quit, we don't give up. You know, we are, every single day, if we're not seeing kids, we're trying some form of outreach.
And that, I think, is one of the reasons why this number, when you look at the dropout rate and the chronic absenteeism, is a little bit deceptive. It's, you know, because some of those kids, it's not that they're chronically absent or they, they just left. And so, you know, I think that's, it's why this is always, I think it's obviously concerning, but it can also be a little bit confusing as to what the reality is. The only other question I have, if, we can look at the middle school slide, go back. Yeah, this one, when I was looking at, this one, when I was looking at through all of this, this is the one that jumped out at me the most, because, you know, years ago, Reverend Cooper and I remember the middle school transformation, and we went through this really big effort to put work into our middle schools. We were going to get those kids more engaged, we added GIZA, we've added programs, we've, we worked so hard to try and beef up the middle school program. And I'm looking at this, and what more can we do? Because obviously, we have a slide from elementary school to middle school, and then we go back up. And, I mean, we all know, middle school, it's tough, it's just, I'm preaching to the choir here. I mean, middle school is just those tough couple of years for a lot of our students. But are we looking at sort of a combo thing, I'm wondering? Are our elementary schools needing to do more to prepare our students for middle school so that they are more ready? I think that's probably part of it. One of the things that over the years I've talked about a lot is that, you know, most of our middle school teachers are subject area. They're not trained when they're in college to be reading teachers, for example. And so that, I know we've added interventions at middle school to address our kids that are having trouble with reading. But, you know, in order to be successful in middle school, those kids need to be reading on grade level. And so I'm thinking that part of this, we need to go to the elementary, look at and drill down, what is the root cause of this slide? And I'm wondering if a good bit of this could be, we need to beef up some things in elementary school to get the kids ready for middle school, and what that secret sauce might be. I know that's a big topic, but I'm just looking at this, and I went, we've done so much work for middle school, and we're, I think we still have, we need to do more, and I'm wondering what the more is.
I would note, to your point, I mean, we're certainly always looking at transitions, and I think some, some observations board members have made, yourself included, about kind of what the apples-to-apples comparison looks like year to year, or test to test. So if you have students leaving on grade level, and then there's not a match in 6th grade, you know, is it that they felt, what's being measured and the way it's being measured and what's being tested is vastly different than what we're looking at when we're looking at elementary SOL tests? And to your point about which subjects are tested in high school and when, and so, you know, you're not looking at, you know, science performance in elementary to science performance in high school. All of a sudden, you've got areas that aren't tested, but- that aren't tested but were tested. And so it really gets hard to draw the kind of comparison that we're all naturally led to want to make by looking at this slide. And so that is a challenge inherent to our current accountability system when it comes to looking at this. But that doesn't mean we're not looking at, you know, what are the challenges of the middle school experience, and how can we set our middle schoolers up for success? And I do think there are always some great lessons to be learned from our elementary educators when it comes to how they plan and differentiate. And we've seen a lot of that transfer into middle school with small group instruction. So, and I apologize, I didn't see Dr. Champ coming forward. I would have called on her. I'm sorry. Did you want to add anything? I know this is something Dr. Champ has worked on tirelessly with our schools.
Actually, you just stated one of the things that we're trying to replicate from the elementary level is the small group instruction, math workshop and so forth. And we've been very deliberate with bringing in those practices, implementing those practices, definitely this school year, and also with our day-two model for those schools that double block, having a very strategic day-two plan in which we have, it's basically small groups. You have them working on no red ink, Lexia, reading, reading for independently, and then also, did I say Lexia? And then we're looking at how we bring in that all-in tutoring as well. So we have some models that the TLIV department have been really working on to streamline that day-two plan. But then also with the Virginia Literacy Act that's coming forward, we are going to have to be more strategic with that, having endorsed reading specialists in those courses for next school year.
And that's a positive, where the state's putting, you know, we would like to see funded, the requirements set forth in the Virginia Literacy Act, but are grateful for the focus that brings to the middle school reading programs. And, you know, while currently maybe not funded, and the way we'd want it to be to make the requirements happen, we're committed to doing that and have already been making our way with that and some, you know, field testing some programs for reading intervention and so on, and really trying to push that into secondary. It's critical. And I was glad to see the Virginia Literacy Act make that acknowledgement. We'd just like to see the staffing funding to back that up. But we do intend to move that into the secondary level as well.
Well, and as we go through that, I'm assuming our literacy plan for Henrico will be updated to include all of this. And I think if we could really hone in on like y'all are doing with the root causes, I have a feeling that if we put more literacy and focus in the middle schools, that would really help our students. I mean, I hear this a lot from teachers, that they'll get kids in sixth grade who are, they're just not reading on grade level. I've said it, you've heard me say it, Reverend Cooper, if they can't read that test, they can't pass the test. And, you know, here we are, testing them, but their reading level isn't up to, you know, being a former reading teacher is a thing of mine. But I just, I think if we look at this, it would be really good information to keep us updated on how we can beef this part up and help our middle schools.
Also, I should have mentioned too, actively learn has been a huge resource that we've incorporated into our literacy program this school year. We started last year, but now that the teachers understand exactly how to implement it, and then we've been more strategic with our assessments as well, with our quarterly assessments. So we're headed in the right direction.
Right. Thank you so much. That's all from me, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Ogburn. Mrs. Atkins?
So I'll be very specific for the Verina District, because I'm very excited about what we are doing, and it is working. So for folks that will be watching, the Verina District has 15 schools, to high, to middle, and 11 elementary schools. And we have continuing to move forward. I think one of the things many accolades have been given, but there's one other area that has been a focus for this district, for my district, which is making sure that we know that our children feel loved. The culture in the building is also significant to their academia, and we continue to reinforce that. While we are out of a pandemic, learning loss began way before the pandemic, but we also understand how it compounded some of the issues outside of the school. And I'm very proud that the leadership at Elko started with Dr. Mizell, and we have the wonderful esteemed principal with us now, Mr. Louse and his team moving forward. Over on to Montrose, and I love seeing your smiling face sitting in your chair. It warms my heart. But having the leadership of our principal at Montrose and her team, it really is a great example of staying focused. And I just want to make sure that that settles in, because there's many distractions. But at the core of education is really staying focused on teaching and love. And I'll just move on from that. I do want to talk about the four schools that are facing accreditation with conditions. My confidence remains steady for John Roth and Verina High School, as they are continuing to really become nestled under new leadership. And I recognize that it's going to take more investment of time, but I remain concerned about Highland Springs Elementary School. And I am hoping to hear what we're going to do for improvements in that space. And also, I'm hoping to hear some insight on results from the extended middle school program. So if we could share some of that, I'd love to hear it.
We'd be happy to provide you specifics on those schools. As we highlighted two examples and don't have all of the school quality plans available for you now, but we can share those, where they're drilling down specifically into the data, each and every school, to your point, using that improvement science to make sure they understand their performance and their areas of growth and their areas for continued opportunity. We'll be happy to follow up on those.
I really was hoping to hear a bit more, especially seeing all of the data here on every, in every way. But I will be just very honest, not having data for the extended results for the middle school program, I'm a bit...
Well, every school's data is here in board docs. I mean, I'm happy, if you wanted us to pull specific pieces out. I don't know that I'm prepared to speak to their improvement plans, but we do have those for each school, and I would be happy to give them to you. I just wouldn't want to speak for the principals and the root causes they've drilled down. If others have insights they might know offhand to share.
I would love to hear something.
Okay.
The other thing I'll just mention is that all of the data noted by school is on the school quality profiles for any member of the public who want to see how a particular school is doing, and is presented in a somewhat digestible way for anyone to access.
And I'm, maybe I misunderstood your question. Are you wanting to know their improvement plan? That's how I understood it, or their performance data?
Both.
Okay. Because we do have their performance data, and we can speak to that here. What I wouldn't have is their specific improvement plans, which they're working towards. But you may have some insights on some things they've discussed so far.
So we're finalizing their improvement plans this week, and we can certainly pull those for you. So you can see everything from the comprehensive needs assessment to the plan that's put in place for each indicator. If I am remembering correctly, the middle school was a program last year, so their data is embedded in Fairfield's data.
Okay, now you're answering my questions, because I was going to say, I went to some of the sources you've referenced, and I have not found it. But that is because their data is incorporated in the Fairfield District.
For last year. This year, they are a school. We'll report it separately next year.
Thank you so much.
And promise you, we will follow up on the individual school plan. So remember, the data was only final from VDOE October 3. So I want to make sure each principal's had the opportunity to do diligence with the school quality process. So I just, I wouldn't want to get in front of that piece. But yes, that's a good point. And I, I'm sorry, we were missing answering that. We do have their scores, and they are reflected, but that's an excellent point related to the secondary, was a program versus a standalone school.
Thank you for that. And that really does answer the question, because I really looked hard to try to find the results of those students, too. It's equally as important. And now I know where to look for it, which is going to be, you know, more so in Mr. Reverend Cooper's area, even though they sit in the Verina District. So thank you for that. The other thought that I had, really looking at a more rigorous way that we look at data, I'm sure we do not have it, so do not feel compelled to share in this moment at some future moment. I would like to see how COVID-19's impact, how are we measuring it? Is there a way to measure it? I'm sure there's going to take more time to see it. And thinking about this, I'm wondering about the absenteeism patterns, resource usage, et cetera. I'll use Hollis Springs Elementary as an example. There's 39% vacancy there. I think Fair Oaks is around 30%. And so it would be nice to see this pie sliced up with all the different areas and impacts to, in order to have academic gains. I think it's a more holistic way to make decisions. The other piece I'd love to learn more about is around the positive attendance habits. Can you give me examples of how they're implemented across Henrico County, or some of the ideas that you have and how you want to implement them across Henrico County?
Sure. And this is something that we're working on in the attendance NIC as well. First, it's reframing the idea around positive attendance versus chronic absenteeism, right? So what are all of the positive reasons that we should be sending kids to school and that students should want to be coming to school? So we did a training with principals in July, just talking about what are the messages that are going home around attendance and how those are positive versus constantly calling out the need to focus on chronic absenteeism. So we, and I'm happy to share that with you, gave principals a set of resources that they can use, that have posters that they can put up around the school, things that the principals can include when they call home, or when they're doing events at the school. So we have several schools that anytime there's an event at the school, there's a piece around positive attendance and what happens when students are absent and when they're missing either the events or the academic work around school. And that's something that the NIC is trying to embed in that school or the countywide process, that once we launch it at our two or three schools and see how it goes, that we would then like to scale to the rest of the schools as kind of our attendance package around the process, as well as products that we can give them to support positive attendance habits versus tracking chronic absenteeism.
Thank you for that. I like that approach. And I do want to hear more about it. I want to make sure I heard you accurately. Did you say we have attendance officers at each of our schools?
Not at each school, right. Yeah. Dr. Hughes will have to address that specifically.
Okay, thank you.
I think my term was attendance secretaries.
Okay. I just, well, that's why I'm asking, because I'm taking a lot of notes and want to make sure they're right. Thank you.
I can address that, though. No, we do not currently have attendance officers at each school. We do, though, work closely with Amory's team, look at the school quality indicators, and look at the levels of where schools are in accreditation. So we do have attendance officers assigned to schools that might be in Level 3 for accreditation. So in other words, which of our schools have the highest chronic absentee rate and also truancy rate? And that's where our attendance officers are placed.
Can you share with me, and it doesn't have to be at this moment, but I'm aware of several schools that do not have attendance officers. And I want to make sure I understand the why. And so the why is because they're allocated to the schools with the higher chronic absenteeism rate. Is that accurate?
That's correct. And then, of course, in our schools that don't have attendance officers assigned either part-time or full-time, we have our school social workers, and we have our attendance teams within the school that are working to do the similar task. Now, in our budget, we do have a budgetary ask for additional attendance officers, because we know that they have been effective going into the community and really reaching out to our families. And as someone said early, really digging into the root cause of attendance. So they've been a wonderful resource, and we will be asking for that as we move forward in the budget.
We've prioritized this a few times over and have looked to, like many of the areas, even where we've added additional positions, we've struggled to find individuals to fill them. So one of the things the team is working on now is looking at the job, the job description, the title, the rate of pay, and so on, to make sure we're competitive before we begin adding new positions that might also remain vacant. We want the supports in the school. We've been looking at the model. And while, you know, every school is covered with supports, to your point, really looking at the value that additional staff member can bring, not just where the schools are facing the most difficulty, but to really be proactive in our other schools as well. So as we are working on the budget process, which I know will make its way to the board very soon, sooner than later in December, you'll see some priority staffing requests in that specific arena.
Thank you for that. And similar to Mrs. Ogburn, I wanted to, I took some time to dive a bit deeper specifically around fifth grade, because those habits, over a period of time, are hard to break. And so ensuring that we have attendance officers, I would say elementary, all our schools, in my opinion, should have an attendance officer. But really understanding the why on how we allocate them is where I'm missing data. So some of them are part-time, some of them are full-time, some of them are going to several schools, and some of them are only going to a school if they have high rates. And so I'm wondering if there's a better way to look at that and look at the value. Another question that I have, so thank you, Dr. Hughes, for that, and thank you for that response. And I'll land the plane soon. I also want to better understand how we're measuring the academic interventions. I know we have several of them. They look different across the district. However, do we have enough data to understand which ones are most effective so that we can replicate that in other areas, other schools?
So secondary curriculum is no longer my wheelhouse.
I understand.
I want to make sure that I don't misspeak on it.
Thank you.
Hi. So these are the types of conversations that are taking place at the school level within their PLC meetings and action team meetings for school quality. And what they do is they look at, you know, student data, various strategies that they're utilizing to teach certain standards, and are doing a better job of taking stock of, you know, what's been effective versus what's been ineffective. And we're still working to highlight those strategies that are having the biggest impact on student learning. We're not there yet, but again, we're working very hard to determine, you know, what those strategies are. And these conversations are taking place daily within all of our schools, K-12.
Thank you, Dr. Farrell. And I'm aware that the principals get together and really go through some of the things that are working in other areas that they may just want to stop. And I was just curious around that, as I receive feedback from families, whether it's, you know, the enrichment through online services or directly in the building, and how it competes with other programming at the school. So whether it's an after-school sport, or whether there's some other art initiative or band initiative where students and families are trying to wrestle with, well, how do I do the tutoring without impacting band practice? How do I, how does all of this work? And I'm hopeful to learn if there is a school that has that balance, that we replicate that and work a bit smarter versus harder. It may be that we find two or three programs that we see that work, that does not compete with passions of children and work schedules of family, and simply replicate that versus having 30 or 40 different programs across the district. I hope that makes sense and is helpful, as you're having discussions and many others are, really working collaboratively to find what works.
So I do want to just add one thing that Dr. Champ mentioned regarding the middle school interventions. Those are very specific curriculum that exist within the school day. And those, we are seeing results from those. So if we look at last year's where they were implemented with fidelity and where we were able to provide the teacher professional learning, we have results that show that that day-two of reading and math impact that Tier 1 and are showing up as they are giving the SOL assessments. So that is embedded, that's intervention for the students who are behind grade level, embedded in the school day, that is working in terms of the middle school model.
I like, I actually prefer for the interventions to take place before school or during the day. After school, it just competes with so many other priorities. And some of them are necessary, like working and trying to get your child to the tutoring. So I would love to learn a little bit more about the interventions taking place during the day that are successful. And I'll pause at that moment. I do have more questions, but I have access to Dr. Cashwell and the team. Thank you so much, Chair Consella.
Thank you so much. Mrs. Atkins, Reverend Cooper.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, I want to just share how appreciative I am of the schools that, the fact that we have no schools that were denied accreditation. So I just want to say that first and foremost. And I'm also proud of the fact that we have two new schools that are fully accredited. And I also want to just preface everything else I'm about to say, based upon I know and I read. and I reiterate that this document is only one indicator, two, one. And it's important to reiterate that because I know sitting here, the growth that has taken place. And I think, Dr. Cashwell, you, you mentioned that several times about student growth, right? The student growth, the individual student transcends an aggregate document that shares information pertaining to the school itself. In that being the case, looking at my schools, I know I have two opportunity schools, I'm sorry, three, Glen Lee, Leburnham, and Fairfield, correct? Those are my three. So I'm going to be interested, Amory, as you do every year, when, you know, we get on the call and you go through this with me, because when you look at the five elementary schools that are credited conditions, three of them are mine. And you look at the middle schools, four out of the four, three are mine. And, you know, I've gone through the data, so I'm not going to reiterate it. We know what the Level 3s are. And it's not the same. It's not consistent. No one school is suffering from the same Level 3. And I'd just be interested to hear how we're going to apply our systematic support for problem solving, our key division staff, support plan development division, network improvement committees. I mean, I want to hear that because I know that this document does not tell the full story. I worked closely the last eight years with every elementary school director, Dr. Farrell, his predecessor, as well as Dr. Champ. She was the principal at Wilder. And I would go in her office and she'd have on this whiteboard, goals and improvement that they've made in every area. And so it's just disheartening when, when there's this misconstruing of data to paint a picture that's not a full picture, but just a piece of a picture. So I just want to say that. And as the school board representative from the Fairfield District, seeing this data that just came out a week ago, that we're still disaggregating, we're still disseminating, I look forward to partnering with you, Dr. Cashwell, and the staff for us to ensure that each of my schools and all of our schools, as Ms. Shea talked about, have all the support they need, every student, every family, every community. Because again, you know, this is just something that we just, we have this conversation every year. Did you want to just say something?
And I appreciate your reiterating this is one dataset and it does not speak to the many efforts and accomplishments in each and every one of our schools and the unique opportunities and successes they've had. And especially as it comes to individual student growth and so much we have to celebrate, you know, but to be able to move each of our schools forward, it's a partnership, right? It's this board partnering, you know, with us and our team to really drill down and use that improvement science and wrap our support systems around our schools. So, you know, that's exactly what we're going to continue to do, to make sure they're getting what they need.
Again, when we talk about the moving goalposts, I think that Ms. Shea even said or Ms. Ogborne first, I wish when we talk about legislative agendas, that there would be some sort of mechanism that could, that could, that could catch this data as far as student growth. Because, because again, the aggregate does not show the picture of where they've come from to where they are and where we believe they can go. And so that's, that's important for me because again, it says one thing, but it's not everything that it says. And so that's, that's what I think. So I look forward to us working toward this, not just my schools, but all of our schools to improve, make it better, better to be great. So thank you, Madam Chair.
All right. Thank you. Thank you so much, Reverend Cooper. Board members, have I heard, I know I've heard it from at least Ms. Atkins and Reverend Cooper, am I hearing perhaps two, two ones to better understand our school-level data? Right? Okay. After our principals have had time to process what was just released, right? And update their plans accordingly.
And our, you know, continue to be open to, as we've done in the past, just making sure that as the year goes on, we're drilling down into the plans the schools have developed and their progress towards meeting those goals. And we look forward to continuing to connect with the board on that throughout the year. I know that's always been something you all have been keenly interested in. We look forward to your feedback on it.
Thank you. It is, and especially as we go into budget season, right? We definitely need to meet before we discuss budgets. So thank you for that. When I look at, I know that the new C-CRI rating, what, is new for this year?
Yes. It counted in accreditation this year. They reported it last year.
But it counted toward accreditation?
Yes.
So what is it, two or a three? What are we not doing to have so many of our schools twos and threes?
So it really depends on the school, right? And that's one of the things that we are asking them to do is to disaggregate the data to see what's driving in terms of how are the students meeting that CCCRI? Is it because they're a finisher for CTE? Is it because they're taking AP, IB, or dual enrollment?
Right.
That tracking process of understanding where those opportunities are within the school for the students is something that we're, we put in place last year as part of their cohort tracking, so that they know, starting in 9th grade, how are students catching the CCCRI credit?
Right.
The other thing we did prior to leaving secondary curriculum, working with Taylor Snow, who's now the director, we put in government an activity, that's the service learning activity, that if nothing else, every student enrolled in government will participate in Project Citizen, and that is credit for CCCRI. And so we are looking at an earlier spot in the curriculum, perhaps in 9th grade health, to put a citizenship or service learning component that students would be able to partake in early. Because the other thing about CCCRI is if you drop out, when your graduation cohort comes, you count against CCCRI as well.
I'm wondering, and help me in my understanding, if we put a component for a service learning in early, 9th, 10th grade, are our students who perhaps are less engaged, don't want to come to school, are they going to miss a CTE opportunity because they're put in something different that's, that's not meeting the standard? Help me understand.
No, so it would be embedded within.
That our students aren't going to miss something, right?
No. It would be embedded within the health curriculum.
Sorry. It would be part of the course they would already be taking, for example, in health and PE. We would embed that.
Right. Like it's, we embedded it in government for this year.
Right.
It's called Project Citizen. That's a service learning component. If you're in government, you're naturally going to take part in that project this year.
Okay.
And that is a way that the school gets credit for the CCCRI.
Okay. And then have we noticed, or I guess principals really haven't had a chance to unpack it yet, I'm interested to know if there's any correlation between this component, the C-CRI, and students really understanding, because it's a college career civic readiness index, right? So would this lend itself to the schools, perhaps, or the students where they're dropping out? Have we looked at that? I mean, I know oftentimes, and maybe these two things aren't related, or maybe Dr. Farrell can speak to it, that when we talk about some of our multilingual learners dropping out because they don't have the hands-on learning experiences that really maybe they would need, or an accelerated program that may be of better benefit to them? So I'm interested if there's, if there's any correlation in that.
So that's some of what we're asking them to do, is they disaggregate the data and look at where are this, what, how did the students in your school who received the credit for that indicator, where did it come from? And are you missing programming that you potentially could implement so that more students would have the opportunity? Because really, it's about exposure, right? CCCRI is about exposure in high school.
And that's what I'm most interested in, is I'm interested in some of our students that could be more successful, perhaps, if they had something that was more engaging to them.
And that's, that's some of what we're asking them to look at as they disaggregate the data. Where, you know, where did your students not have the opportunity to reach that? They also have to account for, like I said, dropout. So they need to pull that. If a student dropped out in 9th grade, it now is affecting their CCCRI when they, when they become seniors.
And then are we, are we looking at, did our students, because when I look at this data, I'm thinking, do we, are our students failing the class and the SOL? Or are students passing the class and failing the SOL? I'd really like some more information, maybe not today, because that's a question that's going to require some research and a deeper discussion. But I'm really interested in that. What work can we do there to better understand that information? Because I'd really like to know that, especially at the middle school, high school level.
And that is part of some of what we've asked them to do through their data disaggregation, through the comprehensive needs assessment.
Okay.
That's part of the discussion that we've asked them to have when they're looking at their failure rate when it comes to the standards of learning versus the rate when it comes to the associated class.
And understandably, it is one day in time.
Right.
I do want to better understand that information. And then lastly, I know I've asked this before because I know our leaders meet often. But when our principals, for example, you guys had a leadership meeting this week, right? The leadership team met. Are our principals having unscheduled time together just to engage and discuss and perhaps share during these quarters? I don't know how often they meet. But is it unscheduled time where there's not professional learning, just literally conversations where folks can, can share back to one another?
Absolutely. So at each of our quarterly meetings and also monthly, elementary and secondary principal meetings, we schedule time for them to just connect and talk about things that are top of mind regarding, you know, academics, chronic absenteeism, all those things. In addition, principals also meet when we don't have meetings, just to discuss some things that are on air plates that they would like to connect with a colleague on. One of the things that I will say that we benefited from with COVID is the virtual meetings. And with principals not having to leave schools, they're having more of those just connecting on the things that are relevant, like, you know, school quality and other things that are critically important to their school. So they do have time at meetings, but also outside of meeting times to meet and connect.
Well, thank you for reassuring me that time exists, because I know our leaders really do have a lot of the solutions. And if we just share back with one another, I think we'll see continued growth in all of these categories. Really, thank you so much, everyone that worked on today's presentation. Thank you very much. Dr. Cashwell.
Yes. And on theme and topic, with all things data sharing, particularly as it relates to indicators in our Destination 2025 strategic plan, we're now going to share some 2023 data on the division's cohort graduation and dropout rates, which we've alluded to quite a bit already, and our career and technical education certifications. Dr. Hinton.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Cashwell. Today, we will be providing you with our annual update on college and career readiness. Two goals of Destination 2025 are to achieve academic excellence and to lead dialogue to ensure equity and access for all students. Several metrics help us to monitor our progress towards these goals, including on-time graduation rates, dropout rates, and career and technical certifications. Each of these metrics are examined through an equity lens to identify under or overrepresentation of specific groups. The Virginia on-time graduation rate is based on individual student data tracked over time that accounts for student mobility and retention patterns, and is also adjusted for students with disabilities and EL students who may take longer than four years to earn a diploma. Students earning a board-approved diploma are considered as graduates. Students who earn GED certificates or complete high school without earning a diploma are not included. In 2023, we had 3,743 total graduates, resulting in nine out of every 10 students who entered the 9th grade in 2019 earning a diploma. Of those graduates, 61% earned an advanced studies or IB diploma, 37% earned a standard diploma, and 2% earned an applied diploma. The overall graduation rate for Henrico was 90.7%, which is the highest rate since COVID in 2020. State-level trends are showing a slight decline from the prior year, while Henrico has increased our graduation rate. The cohort dropout rate includes former students who do not stay enrolled in high school throughout their four years, as well as any student whose latest status is unconfirmed, meaning reported as a transfer to another division but discontinued public schooling instead. This dropout rate calculation is not the inverse of the graduation rate. As I mentioned, students who may have completed, such as having earned a GED, but are not considered as graduates or dropouts. In 2023, Henrico had 274 students reported as dropped out or unconfirmed, which is an 11% decrease from 2022. The dropout rate of 6.6% is the lowest since 2018. To explore this data by student group, the division uses an equity index formula. The equity index is used to identify groups that are under or overrepresented. Scores less than one indicate underrepresentation of the group, whereas an index score higher than one shows overrepresentation of the group. In looking at the equity index for on-time graduation, we are pleased that most of our student groups are equitably represented in the data. However, as we've noted in the past, we continue to see an underrepresentation of our Hispanic and English learner students in this indicator. However, improvement is noted for the Hispanic group since 2018-19. When the index is calculated at the state level, you can see that Henrico trends mirror those of the state, particularly among English learner students. Consequently, when we look at the equity index for dropouts, Hispanic and English learner students continue to be overrepresented in this indicator at both the division and the state level. Additionally, in Henrico and across the state, we continue to see an overrepresentation of students with disabilities and economically disadvantaged students. When comparing to 2018-19 data, which is the first year of our strategic plan, some progress has been made with our Hispanic, students with disabilities, and economically disadvantaged student groups. In a few slides, staff will present more detailed information on the supports and strategies in place to help students meet graduation requirements. However, at this time, Mac Beaton, Director of Career and Workforce Development, will share information about career and technical certifications of our graduates, which is another metric of college and career readiness.
In 2019-20, we awarded 3,361 industry certifications and state license. This was not where we wanted to be, but obviously the pandemic had a major impact on that. In 21, oh, thank you, Thomas. There's somewhere on the right one here. I'll find it. Here we go. In 21-22, we awarded 5,514 industry certifications state license. Last year, we awarded 6,253 industry certifications and state license. Now, what's important to remember, in these state licenses, this tests a deeper understanding of the subject matter based on the student's ability to apply the concepts they've learned in the classrooms to solve problems. We continue to work to ensure that these certifications offer our students, that we offer our students are meaningful. Last year, we offered 73 different certifications that are directly connected to the courses and are meaningful certifications for employers as students continue their education. Successfully reaching graduation is often multiple factors that impact this. For students who are CTE completers, their graduation rate continues to trend upward. Last year, we had a graduation rate of 98.91%. Now, this is something to be excited about. But there are several factors that contribute to this success. When students are in CTE courses, they gain and build confidence based in their ability to succeed. The hands-on approach leads to practical problem solving. Other important factors that leads to CTE student success is relationships. Our CTE teachers, because of the nature of the course, their experience in the field, the students' interests, can form meaningful relationship with the students that help motivate and encourage them to success. The motto, "Failure is not an option," is very prevalent in our programs. Now, one of our new places that we measure our success, as we were talking about earlier, is learning opportunities in the workplace. What we, the state refers to as high-quality work-based learning opportunities. Last year, we reported 1,648 high-quality work-based learning opportunities. According to VDOE, work-based learning experiences must meet three criteria to be deemed as high quality: relate to the student's career goals and interests, integrate with instruction, and performed in partnership with local businesses and organizations. At the time of this report, we had one staff member working towards collecting this data. We are sure that this number will continue to grow as the opportunities for our students continues to grow. Through high-quality work-based learning opportunities that has a direct connection to student interest and coursework, we know our students will be better equipped to graduate enrolled, enlisted, and/or employed. I will now... I will now turn it over to my colleague, Dr. Farrell.
Over the past year, our high schools have continued to prioritize personalized support and partnership building with students and their families. As we enter the 23-24 school year, we want to highlight some of the ongoing initiatives and new strategies in place to ensure the success of all students, including those who may have faced challenges during the previous academic year. Before the start of this school year, our dedicated school staff proactively reached out to students and their families through home visits or on-campus meetings. These interactions aim to establish strong partnerships and to collaboratively develop individualized goals for students who may have struggled in the 22-23 school year. Our high schools continue to be intentional with leveraging various teams: intervention teams, attendance teams, and school quality teams for each student cohort. We closely monitor early warning signs like attendance, grades, and disciplinary incidents to identify students in need of additional support. The level of support provided is tailored to each student's specific needs and experiences. To assist students who are behind in credits, we continue to offer the eight-block schedule in some of our schools, which provides opportunities during the school day for students to earn additional credits. We also offer opportunities for students to complete extra courses through platforms like Edgenuity and Evening School programs. Beyond academic support, we remain committed to fostering a sense of belonging within our school community. We encourage students to participate in extracurricular programs such as clubs, sports, and mentorship opportunities, as we believe that a strong connection beyond the classroom enhances the overall school experience. Our schools are dedicated to ensuring that all students graduate on time. We consistently review and monitor progress and provide personalized support to exceptional education students, English learners, economically disadvantaged students, and those in other reporting categories. It is through this individualized approach that we aim to achieve success for every student in our community. This concludes our update, and we welcome questions at this time.
Thank you so much, Dr. Farrell, Dr. Hinton, and Mr. Beaton. Reverend Cooper, do you have questions or comments?
Well, just a couple observations, questions, and comments. So first and foremost, thank you all for the presentation. I'm happy to see our graduation rate at the highest it's been since before the pandemic, as well as our dropout rate, the lowest since before the pandemic. So I'm really excited about that. Mr. Beaton, can you ask a couple quick questions for me? So really appreciative of that graduation rate for those who enter into our CTE program. Currently, how many seats do we have in CTE?
With the completion...
Before.
Beforehand? Oh, let's see, it'd be about 1,200 seats available.
All right, so and the new ones online will give us what?
Will be up to 2,000.
Okay, so additional 800. So what's our waiting list? Kind of getting that.
We've been averaging, depending on the year and, you know, because it fluctuates, around about 800 students. So we should be able to meet our needs, and then we have a little bit of flexibility with some additional space at the Oak if we start to grow. But I think what you're going to find, too, is with the new additional spaces, we're creating new additional offerings that's going to open up some opportunities for students that they haven't seen before. And some of the programs that we've had a large waiting list will shift over. For instance, if you're, we might have a huge waiting list for sports medicine, but if you add in physical therapy, you're going to start to pull some of those students out into that program.
Well, I think that's phenomenal. You kind of surmised what I was getting at. Basically, we have a successful graduation rate now. We are at full capacity but adding capacity with more opportunities, and there are those students that want to take advantage of those opportunities as soon as the opportunities become available, and we have the ability to expand that even more.
Yes, sir.
You know, for me, everybody's path is not the same. And I think the reporting that we've seen in regards to our indicators, performance indicator last presentation, the new metric that they added that kind of is able to encapsulate the fact that it's not just about what takes place in the classroom, but also career and technical education, and that is a viable career path forward for a lot of people. Every time I go to the Oak, as you know, when I meet for my CTE foundation meeting, the people that come after hours to get certifications and training, it's just, I'm in awe, just the diversity of the people, the socioeconomic background, the race, the gender. And it says that we're doing a phenomenal job of helping to do workforce development, even in our schools right now for adults. And so I just want us to continue to make this as robust as possible, because I think in the global world in which we live in now, you always make the analogy of, you know, we don't teach people how to fix toasters or TVs anymore because they don't buy toasters, TVs that get new, or a CD player, tape player. It's constantly evolving, and I hope that we continue to be on the cutting edge. Another point of privilege, I was excited on yesterday to go to Henrico High School's convocation, and it was kind of a bittersweet, kind of swan song for me because it's my last one in the capacity Ms. Ogburn as a school board. But I was so excited when Ms. Castiel Rose shared the graduation date and time, and she stated it will be at the Henrico Sports and Events Center. And so that's a watershed moment as well for us to have this phenomenal facility coming online, and the class of 2023-4, because we're in '23 now, will be the first class. And I just think that speaks volumes to where we're always trying to go academically, facility, and just as a division. So thank you all, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much, Reverend Cooper. Let's see, Mrs. Shea.
Thank you so much. Just two questions, I think. I think they're for you, Dr. Hinton. Why is GED students not included in the graduation rate? Do we know?
I can't speak to the rationale on that. That's determined by the state.
Don't we love that? Thank you. And then also, do we have, or could you share with me, if it's reinventing the wheel, I don't want y'all to do that, but, you know, as we look at our dropout rates slide, the biggest outlier is our Hispanic students and our English learner students. They have significantly the largest number there in the equity index. So do we have that information kind of disaggregated? So if we look at Hispanic students who are not EL students and how that number might compare with the others? I know you don't have it off the top of your head, but I didn't know if that was something that, you know, we could look at just to see what the, you know, because there's overlap there, and so just to try to parse that out and kind of see where we are.
Sure, we can get that for you.
Awesome. And then just, Mac, you know, I'm a fan of you and everything you do and everything your department does, and I'll just take a little point of privilege to just share happy related with this. There's a student that I got to work one-on-one with last year and made a relationship with who, as one of the slides said, the warning indicators that are monitored for dropout, checked all those boxes. And when I was working with them, I said, have you ever considered being a nurse? Because they are so smart. And they were accepted into the nursing program as, or one of the related programs as a sophomore. And I saw them in the building last week or the week before, and they ran up and they said, Miss Shea, I love it. I love the nursing program. And even furthermore, they have gotten enough credits that they are going to graduate a year early. And their attendance is spot on, and their behavior is spot on, and all of those things have just kind of come together and clicked. And so it's just so joyful when any of our students, they find their niche, and they find their passion, and it has long-lasting impacts, not only to get them across the stage in May, May now, get them across the stage in May, but to do it, as you say, with, equipped with what they need to start a career and to go into the world and be successful, and that we're giving them everything we need. So whether that be, you know, enlisted or employed or going on with our education, wherever path, we're really equipping them and getting them across the stage. So thank you to you and your team and for all the work you do. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Shea and Mrs. Ogburn.
Mac, don't leave. You're getting your steps in, going back and forth. Can we look at this slide, the one that had the graduation rate on it? When I was looking at this, knowing what you do for the kids at Henrico, if you take out the certifications, because obviously, not every kid's going to get one, but I thought, isn't that what they all need? You know, really and truly, that's what all of our kids need. Now, granted, if they're going to continue on their education, they're not going to necessarily have a certification, but they all need those relationships. They need those opportunities. It is what, that sort of encapsulates everything that we're supposed to be doing. And I'm such a big fan of internships and kids having the ability early on to see what they might be interested in. And like you said, that spark that is ignited in a kid, that is why you do what you do. And so for you to put this together for us, I was so excited to see this because it really is something that every teacher in the county, that's it right there. So I don't know, I'm, the graduation rate of 98.9, I mean, oh, my gosh, you're right. That is something to be excited about. And obviously, with everything that's going on in your world, I don't know how you have time to do what you do, but just really, really excited about where it's gone, where it's come from, and where it's going and the vision that you keep sharing with us. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Ogburn. Ms. Atkins.
And Mr. Beaton, if you come on back.
Don't go anywhere.
Come on back. I think that when I look at each individual piece on this slide with the 98.91%, and as you were speaking, what was flowing through my head was anticipation and expectation. Our students are anticipating doing well, and teachers are expecting them to do so. That's beyond academics. That's really around some foundational expectations of whomever our children encounter. Making sure that they are with qualified staff that have high expectations, not just academically, but showing them, not just telling them. And I really think that all of those pieces form well to a beautiful puzzle. I'll say it that way. And part of this really, truly is the leadership that is brought into this space. And being an example, I know your plate is full, but the reward is so much bigger that you can continue. And I'll just leave it there. So thank you for everything. I do have some more. So, Dr. Farrell, if you come on to the mic. And so, Dr. Hinton as well, you may be helpful in this particular space. Just seeing the progress is very encouraging. I'm very pleased to see it across the board, across the board, and I believe that it will just continue to get better. I am curious, I don't know which slide it is that mentioned mentoring, because this is a space that I am hopeful that we would dive into much, much more because it speaks to relationships. The last, yeah, there we go. Can you share with me what engagement you've seen, not just from students, but from the community, as well as staff in the space of mentoring? I know we have Henrico Heroes as well, so I just want to say that.
So starting with the schools, our school staff, teachers, coaches have stepped up to sort of partner with students who need additional supports. Also, in some of our schools, they've leveraged juniors and seniors to support the ninth and 10th graders. We're not where we're going to be in the next, say, three to five years, but we are doing a good job of leveraging what we have in our schools. We've also had some schools to reach out to families to come in and support in any way possible. In fact, in one of your schools, Ms. Atkins, Avrana High School, Principal Sears has done a great job of leveraging, you know, parental support in terms of, you know, getting parents to participate in the overall school environment. So to answer your question, student mentorship, staff mentorship, and working towards engaging the community a little more effectively.
How has Henrico Heroes been valuable in that space?
That's a great question. I'll have to get back to you on that one.
That's fine.
Some of our schools leverage Henrico Heroes with, you know, small groups of students. We also have communities in schools in some of our schools that have been a tremendous resource and support. So I'll get back to you with more on Henrico Heroes.
Thank you so much. When I saw that on there, I thought, what a great area to expand upon in deepening relationships with students just across Henrico. I've seen, I want to say Deep Run, I saw some great stuff there. I think it was Deep Run, especially around their Black Student Union. And the sparks that I see when they have the opportunity to have a mentor that perhaps they can lean in on in ways where they can't with no one else. So I appreciate your response and sharing more information. The other area I want to understand, and this data may not even be available, but trying to think innovatively and thinking 21st century, do we have, or can you shed any light on data that would align with the impacts on well-being? The reason I ask that, when I think about dropout rates, and I just think across the board about well-being, and we're going to continue to see impacts specifically around mental well-being, I would be very curious as to what those impacts look like. I don't know how preventable they are, but to understand how many students across Henrico have absenteeism because of their health, which may trigger another response to our dropout rate. Is that something that's available? And if so, are we privy to a deep dive on it? If it's not available, how can we be the catalyst to start the conversation on it?
So let me give some thought to that in terms of what data we may already have available, and we can get back with you. I know that we certainly do have some coding related to why students are absent, so we can delve into that further. But in terms of like specific well-being measures, we'd have to look at that.
I appreciate that. I don't know of any other school system that has really taken a deeper dive, and Dr. Cashwell, you may know of some, I just don't know of any, but I thought, just thinking about the future, if that's a conversation that we can continue to have and dive deeper in, we may have some solutions, specifically not that we are a hospital or provide healthcare services, but having an understanding of trauma and what our families across Henrico are going through, we could be a resource. And so that's just to giving you some context into what I'm thinking, so I appreciate.
This may be getting too granular, but I think it relates to what you're speaking to, which is that broader connection, right, between students' well-being and then their academic success, their attendance in school, all of those things go hand in hand, and we know the research says that. So I think some of our efforts around the full-service community models, and specifically, if, you know, you drill down to, for example, the telehealth clinic at Glenly, right? So that was parsing down why are students absent, and the role that access to quality healthcare, you know, if the ear infection can be diagnosed in-house, they're not missing school for appointments, and connections made, and all of those things, and that can reduce, that increases well-being. It can reduce absenteeism. So I think, you know, I certainly understand your question, and I think there may not be one data set out there that gives us that picture holistically, but there are many, and we've begun that work of how to connect all of those things to inform our work, our wraparounds, our placement of family, community engagement, community and school staff, and so on. So we'll continue to push on that because there's no doubt they're connected.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Atkins. My questions are going to be, well, I guess maybe one for Dr. Farrell. So I have to say, well... So I have to say, when, when we had our back-to-school presentation, I was really appreciative of the home visits and just the community outreach that I believe really must have been ramped up a level in August, if I'm not mistaken, prior, in comparison to prior years. When Ms. Atkins was referencing the chronic absenteeism earlier in the truancy, as to the chronic absenteeism, perhaps even more advocates for, should be added to look into attendance? I mean, either more advocates added or pay our advocates more in general and then add maybe responsibilities there because it seems like they're already doing the work in the community.
I think you bring up a great point, Mrs. Cancel, which is the role so many of our staff have in playing into this bigger attendance piece. So, I mean, you might have an attendance officer working where there's already a problem or chronic issue, but then all of the preventative pieces. And so one of the things our family and community engagement team has done as they're, as we have more family advocates and school resource coordinators placed out in schools this year, so all of our schools are covered. You know, perhaps a family is struggling with access to a community resource with, that would then prevent, you know, lack of access to that is preventing perhaps attendance regularly in school or something of that nature. They can make those key connections for families and thus prevent the issues. So I think it's, it's all of those layers of support staff are critical, both, you know, directly on the attendance front, the point Mrs. Atkins was making, to your point, those support staff, the work our social workers do and so on. So as those wraparound supports become more robust in schools, I think we see hopefully more preventative work, you know, proactive versus reactive when there's a problem, which is our goal.
And since they have the relationships too, I mean, it just, it goes with everything that we're doing. So when I looked at that slide, so apologies, Dr. Farrell, I kept you at the podium unnecessarily. My next two questions are for Mr. Baton. And I'm going to be speaking to the, our work-based learning again. So we have 1,648 work-based learning opportunities.
Those are the ones we captured, yes ma'am.
So how do we, are we doing this well? Where are we in this space? Because this is new, correct?
This is new and this was their first step at grabbing this. And honestly, this is their low, I'm going to call it a low-hanging fruit, the ones that are easy to capture. I think the opportunity exists for students who may not be in CTE programs yet, and I use that term yet because I think it's a great opportunity, but to help them find that avenue through these high-quality work-based learning experiences to find out what they want to do or what they don't want to do is just as important as what they do want to do. And our hope is that we're going to add additional staffing through the budget process to start to work because to ask a school counselor to do that on top of everything else they're doing is a tremendous lift. I really feel like, you know, it has to be someone who's connected to the business world and connected to the students and being able to make those unions between the two and find out those opportunities that exist and where these opportunities need to exist.
Yes, so if we could go to the last slide where we had the mentorship. So I'm not really thinking this is a different kind of mentorship. When I was looking into this, other school divisions have career counselors or career coaches. And I know we have coaches, but they're not necessarily in this space, right, with career or life-ready or helping students rule things in or rule things out. So is this something that we're looking at?
Yeah, I mean, I would think it's, it's not even just the staff, but those experiences that began in elementary school, which you've been seeing us sort of unpack and develop over the years with the major clarity and students having access to tools and resources and lessons to engage them, even at the elementary level through our school counseling programs that have them begin thinking about pathways and opportunities. Because if it doesn't start early, oftentimes, you know, students aren't, or their families for that matter, aren't aware of the many options in middle school that would lead to some of the secondary options, you know, the high school options. So I think it's, it's all of those things working together, not just in the high schools. But I think what, what's been done masterfully, both in the career and technical education arena and our elementary through secondary world is kind of lining up all these things, right? And I think, you know, Mr. Baton made an excellent point that this, this idea of high-quality work-based learning experiences, they don't just live in that career, you know, they're there, we can document them very clearly in the CTE space, but what do they look like everywhere else and how do we start building stronger bridges and connections to capture all of those and, and do so in a manner that, you know, begins this conversation early on with students?
I mean, I guess I'm, I'm thinking about staffing and I'm also thinking about, you know, if I'm a, if I'm a counselor and having heard from my counselors at the secondary level, they're over, they've got a lot going on. But I'm, I'm speaking, I realize our why that we're exposing our students younger to, you know, what is your passion? What do you like in elementary school, right? All of our career things. And then our middle school and, and middle school and high school opportunities with the summer polytech programs, for example. But I was wondering, I just think that how many, a person who this is what they do, this is what, it's not something added to their plate, it is what they do to engage with our students might be valuable because not everyone is in, if I go to the counselor, you know, I may be pushed into an honors class or an AP class or something that really isn't for me. So to me, these work-based learning experiences, or at least this exposure, rolling them in, rolling them out, I mean, if we only have 1,648, what does that include? I mean, I'm just thinking if we only have one person doing this, is that enough for a division our size?
Well, in comparison, just, just to give you a number-wise, so I'm very proud of that number because Chesterfield had 2,000, it was like right at 2,100, high-quality work-based learning experiences. So I'm very proud of that number of what we accomplished. Now they do have a few more people working towards gathering that, but I think we're doing a great job and I think, but I think the opportunity is there. If you ask me what our ideal number would be, if we have 4,000 students graduating every year, 4,000 high-quality work-based learning opportunities would be the ideal world and we'll work to get there.
Yeah, and I think this is reflected even before the VDOE and high-quality, you know, our strategic plan and our, it says every student before they walk across the stage in Henrico School will have engaged in a job shadow, an internship, a mentorship, they're going to have that life-ready experience. So this is something we were committed to long before the, you know, the stage. But I think it does bring us, you know, an opportunity to look at other models that are out there, other positions, the way other districts handle this, certainly nothing's off the table as we kind of think about what's the right structure to really accelerate this work in service of our students.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. That's it. Dr. Cashwell, is that all the items from you this afternoon?
That concludes all of our planned presentations for this afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, board members, the next item on the agenda this afternoon is the approval of a consent item. Are there any questions? Mrs. Shea.
Yes, thank you. Dr. Cashwell, or someone from your team, Parent Square is a new application to us and I see that we're looking at an amendment to our contract with them. So can you just kind of give some context? I know it lists the expanded possibilities. Can you kind of give some context as to why we are proposing this change?
Good afternoon. As you know, we launched Parent Square as the new rapid notification and parent and family engagement tool this school year. It has great features as far as posts from schools, teachers being able to post directly to parents in their classrooms, and then of course, rapid notification in the event of an emergency at a school. We've had great success with that so far this year. We've had 15,569 posts. The majority of those are coming from the classroom, from teachers, directly to families of students in their class. And based on the usage that we've seen so far, teachers, principals, and school communities have asked for features that are available that we have not launched yet. We thought that we would take a year to begin use and then slowly phase in over time some additional features, but the response has been so overwhelmingly positive that we would, we've come before you today to ask for the funding to release them earlier. And that includes things such as appointments that schools can use for scheduling parent-teacher student conferences, the sign-ups for classroom activities and school-based activities, permission slips to have a more consistent and succinct ease of use for collecting permission slips for students. And then eventually also a student square component where students who are participating in clubs, theaters, teams, it's a way that we can build groups using student email addresses to allow coaches and sponsors to safely communicate with students without having to use their private device.
Great, I have heard that feedback on the student square piece. So while I'm, anything that is responsive to our teachers' needs, but also any way we can streamline apps, you know, I'm definitely supportive of. So thank you for providing some clarity there on what the change is and why the change and that it's being responsive to teacher needs. So thank you.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Shea. Any other questions, comments from board members? Okay, then I'd like to have a motion then to approve this item.
I move that the school board accept, approve, and/or award items 4.01 through 4.04.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Shea, for the motion. May I have a second?
Thank you.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Items 4.01 through 4.04 on the consent agenda have been approved. The next item this afternoon is the public forum and this was for written comments only. Citizens had until noon on Wednesday, October the 11th, to submit written comments for the board's review using a link out on our HCPS website. Citizens took advantage of this opportunity and we do sincerely appreciate your input. Comments were compiled and provided to the board prior to the start of today's meeting and those comments have also been posted for your review out in board docs. The next item is unfinished business. Board members, do we have any? Hearing none. The next item is new business. Is there any? Hearing none. The last item this afternoon is announcements. I believe Dr. Cashwell has an announcement to make this afternoon.
I do, thank you Chair Cancel. I just wanted to take note that we have a change of command ahead of us in, in the midst related to our school lieutenant for the Henrico Schools HPD partnership. And I want to take a moment to thank and recognize Captain Robertson for his service to Henrico County Public Schools. So if I might have him stand and we're going to gather to celebrate him after this meeting, but if I could have him stand so we can acknowledge him. He has served with us over the last 11 years and is going to be taking on a new role in the coming weeks as patrol captain for the central station. He started as an SRO back in 2012 and stayed in that role for six years before becoming a school lieutenant, another three years, then his current role of school captain, which he'll be transitioning out of, he started in 2021. And in that capacity, he has been the primary liaison between Henrico County Public Schools and HPD and oversees all of our SROs. Captain Robertson truly embodies the collaborative partnership between Henrico Schools and the HPD. He is often our first call, his phone must ring nonstop. He is both proactive in keeping us informed on pertinent issues and he's also responsive to any issues or needs we might raise as a school system, no matter the difficulty of the topic at hand. Captain Robertson is always a warm and strong presence, a team player and a consummate professional. He has been and we know he will continue to be firmly dedicated to the safety and well-being of our Henrico School students and staff. So while he isn't going far and we will miss him as an honorary member of our HCPS team, Ashley, you are always welcome in Henrico County Public Schools and thank you for your service to the citizens of Henrico, but to our school students and staff as you served in that role.
Thank you so much for that recognition, Dr. Cashwell. And then the last thing that we'll do today is the announcement of our next meeting. The school board's next meeting will be on Thursday, October the 26th, 2023, with a work session scheduled to begin at 1:00 PM and a monthly meeting at 6:30 PM. Meeting times may be adjusted as needed. This meeting is adjourned.